Ladies and gentlemen, it is now 5:33. This is regular work session for the City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted both in person and online. And the clerk can note that all council members are present and all of our staff members are present. And the public can attend in person if they like, or the public can also watch this meeting on channel 16 or 859, or join us on Burnsvillemn.gov/Meetings. The public can also join us by participating through Zoom, by joining us at zoom.us/join. And more information is available on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. And this is a work session, and we go directly to the items that's on our agenda. And we have folks in the audience that are here for this meeting. So we'll go around so everybody knows who's present. And I will, this time, start with our city manager.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor Greg Lindberg, city manager.
Mayor Shulman, City Council.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Todd Hellenen, consultant with Kimley Horn.
Chad Casey, project manager with Mindot.
Jen Desrood, City Engineer.
Jenny Rhodes, vehicle.
Bethany Brewer, strategic conditions.
Vince Ruckman, City Council.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Elizabeth Kautz, mayor. And then we'll start with you.
Scott Heckam, Department of Recreation Department.
Mike Chorley, Department of Transportation.
Robert Weber, Burnsville Region Council.
Chris Old Valley, Department of Associations.
Welcome to all of you. Okay. The first item that's on our agenda is the I-35W resurfacing and bridge replacement project. And our city engineer, Jen Desrood, is going to be presenting along with our partners. And Jen, you can introduce them again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mrs. the Council. So this is an early introduction of the major Mindot investment in Burnsville. So Chad was with the council a few years ago to just give you a heads up that this was coming. And now we're further down the way, and he wanted to come back with other counsel and give you another update. The project is planned for 2025 and 2026, so there'll probably be another time for us to come together and give you another update as we get closer. So the design has been progressing, and we have two presentations. So we'll start with Chad Casey, who's the Mindot project manager. And then I'll introduce Todd in between.
Okay. Hi, Chad, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Thanks for having us. So we're here. We started this project, as Jen mentioned, a few years ago. It's primarily driven by pavement needs. The pavement is deteriorating, as you know. There's an overlay, bituminous overlay over the concrete that's coming apart. There's bridge deterioration on a number of the bridges, so that was kind of the driver for the project. But then we're also looking at some other things. When we look at a project, we try to figure out, you know, what other things can we fix while we're in the area? So we're looking at putting in some roadway lighting along the corridor, bike and pedestrian infrastructure, making sure that's all up to date. We're placing the bridges, I-35 over Cliff Road, the two bridges over I-35 at Highway 13, and then Burnsville Parkway as well. That's the major project scope. Then we've got some additional things. We had a study to look at low-cost, high-benefit improvements for the traffic. And so we identified some areas, Highway 13 on I-35W. We'll add some, what we call buffer lanes, just to add a little bit of localized capacity to the system, help that interchange perform better. And then also extending the auxiliary lane from Highway 13, the northbound on-ramp up through the Cliff Road interchange, and then a little bit of an improvement at northbound entrance ramp at Casoff 42. All right, then, another component. I just want to say the city staff and county staff have been excellent to work with, great partners. Lately, we've been meeting just about every week, every couple of weeks at the most. One of the big issues to coordinate is the Casoff 42 project. The city is contributing funding. They got a large grant to build a new, or modify the current interchange at Casoff 42. Do you typically call it Egan Drive?
No.
Casoff 42?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So all of you know, I'm sure, that's congested intersection up at the top of the ramp. So the city and county were looking for a way to improve that. So we've got the exit ramp, which will now split, and you can either go up to Casoff 42 to take a right, or you can go underneath the bridge and loop around to a new roundabout up by the mall. And then you can get back to Casoff 42 to head east, or you can go right into the mall or take the roundabout to Buck Hill, southbound, Buck Hill Road. So the city did the preliminary design and the layout, and we will be constructing it and adding it to our plans for the larger project and building it with the whole interstate All right, staging alternatives, just a quick run-through, and we will be talking more as these get developed further. We're looking at three alternatives right now. Obviously, there's a lot of traffic on I-35W, and it's kind of a key for the city and access to commuters. We've got a few different alternatives we're looking for, looking at. The first alternative is the most restrictive, be using crossovers, putting all the traffic first on the northbound side while we reconstruct southbound, and then flopping it the next year. So keeping that to a two-year project. There'll probably be an early project in 2024, just to do some early work, reconstruct shoulders so it can handle traffic, build the crossovers, anything we can do to get kind of a jump start. So that alternative is the most restrictive because it does block off access on whatever side of the road is under construction right now. So we're modeling that. It's kind of just a base case to compare to. We know it's restrictive. We'll still need to look at, you know, what kind of detour routes would be available, and if that even makes sense, so. Then we've got alternative two, which would be basically the same thing, where we're putting everybody on to the northbound lanes while we reconstruct southbound, but we would leave one lane on that southbound, existing southbound direction, kind of a chute lane, sometimes it's called, to go counterflow to the construction area, so you can access the ramps on the side under construction. So that does add some time to the project. It'll extend out the impacts of the construction timeframe. There are some drawbacks to doing that, but it does provide that access. And then the alternative three is kind of a similar scenario for most of the project. But north of Highway 13, we would have five lanes with a movable barrier. So in the peak direction, you could have three lanes, and then you could switch that, you know, morning to afternoon. So those are the three kind of primary alternatives. There's some sub-alternatives in there, but that's the basic idea. So modeling is all getting done, and we'll report out and come back and talk to the city about that. Some of the project challenges, I'm not going to go through in detail on a lot of these. We've got the Union Pacific Railroad under, you know, along Cliff Road. So working with the railroad to find out, you know, what design best meets their needs. The pier right now is really close to that track, so we want to get that moved over, how far over we do move it, that kind of thing. The transmission line's over that bridge. That also constricts the timeframe that we have available to build that bridge. We can shut that down for periods, but it needs to be kind of in those off-peak months when there's not a lot of draw in the power, so not during July and August. All right, current priorities, we're working through the geometric layout. The city and the county have the layout pretty well done for the Casoff 42 section. We're making good progress on the rest of I-35W. There's a number of environmental studies going on. You'll hear about the visual quality manual shortly, but we're also looking at air quality, noise analysis, contaminated properties, and coordination. We've got the Casoff 42 TED project, UP Railroad XL, and then staging is kind of the next big thing that we're working on. All right.
Did you want to go? I think you skipped a slide and it has...
Oh, the schedule?
Yeah, the schedule. Oh, too many.
I did not.
It was in between there.
One more time.
There it is.
All right. So the basic, the schedule of the project, we're shooting for layout completion by the end of June, environmental documentation in September. Letting, we're shooting for October of 2024, and then main construction in years '25 and '26. And that's due to the Highway 77. There's a big project coming up in 2027, so we need to be done with any major impacts to the freeway in 2026.
All right.
Do you want to pause for questions now, or just after the entire?
I guess, is there any questions on the construction project?
Any questions on the construction terms in all of that? What's the 27th seater?
Unbonded overlay, so concrete, we can, basically putting a new layer of concrete over the road.
That's not very exciting.
There will be, on the bridge also, there's some maintenance work, new deck, or at least a millin overlay. And then they're looking at the cables and what they could do to upgrade, if they need to upgrade those. They may replace the cables on it.
And all of this is going to be coordinated with the bridge work that we're doing with the, with Kimley Horn and...
Yes.
With the visual, visioning quality work that we're...
Right, yep.
Yeah, so there are the three bridge areas that are going to be replaced. And so the next part of the presentation is to talk about more the aesthetics of those bridges. So Todd Hellenen with Kimley Horn, he's been leading that effort and going through the process. And Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Keely are part of that, so you have a leg up, but we want to bring the council up to speed with what's happened so far. Just so everyone knows, the city has budgeted $350,000 in 2025 or '26 for aesthetic improvements focused at Burnsville Parkway. And that's been in our budget and just kind of moved out, waiting for this project to occur.
Yep.
And so tonight, Todd's going to present what the process and some of the concepts. And then what we're looking for is council concurrence with the way the manual's going, and then approval to go to the public and have an open house, which we're planning on doing in the next few weeks here in mid-July. So Todd will walk through the process, and we'll have time for questions at the end.
Thank you, Jen.
Yes. This is Jay Desrood. I brought it up. The... It's important for pedestrians as well. The designs, you'll see, it's additional enhancements that people have to pay for to complete the vision.
Yep.
So it's not like our $350,000 is there. That's not paying for any of the aesthetic enhancements. We're going to live beyond that to be able to accommodate more pedestrian foot.
Thank you for pointing that out. There is some visual quality that Mindot will do just normally.
And I think Todd's going to address that because that's been part of the work that we've been doing in our task force. Yeah.
Madam Mayor and a member of the council, my role in the project and working with Mindot is I am the visual quality manager, which means my job is to make sure at the end that this looks good, but not doing it alone by any means, because we, as you know, we have a visual quality advisory committee made up of members from Mindot, members from the county, members from the community here, which are really super important, and then the consultant design team. And so what, what the visual quality advisory committee's role is to give us information that can help us understand what's best for the community, things about the community we might not know because we don't live here, but might be important to you. And certainly, you went through a process similar to this that might not have been called this back in 25-plus years ago, when you did the two bridges, the Parkway Bridge and Trunk Highway 13 Bridge. So if you look at the purpose of what the role of the committee is, it's, it's really, it's spelled out really nicely, but it's about the mission and, and what are the community values, what's important to you. And so we read these at every meeting, plus in, when we're back at the shop doing designs, we read these because we need to remind ourselves what's important. And hopefully, you'll see some of these things, especially when we talk about the mission, or, excuse me, the vision statement that we developed with the advisory committee, really just kind of brings everything down, parses everything down to what's important to you. So I normally would read this, but we, we want to make sure there's time in the end. But if you look at that, there's some things that are really important that were brought to our attention. And it has to do with the history of the community. There are things that, both native limestone, so their products, when we think about building products, there's limestone, there are bricks, there are things like that that are in the community. Farming was very important that we learned to the community and the history. And then what we say here is, when possible, we want to make sure that community resources are preserved. So you will see that in the bridges. That's one place where we decided that there's some preservation that could happen, and those are the elements that you developed that were on specifically the Parkway Bridge and the Trunk Highway 13 Bridge. So this vision statement, while we helped craft it, was really developed by the community and members of the advisory committee. This just didn't come from the consultant team because we couldn't have done this well. We would have not come up with these. So very important for you to understand that this came from the committee itself. So some of the things you'll see here, the idea of using limestone in a lot of the bridges Mindot does nowadays, you'll use a limestone, a form liner, so it looks like limestone made out of concrete. And contractors have gotten really good at that to make it look nice, and it's long-lasting. These are bridges that are going to be here for a long time, so we want to make sure we're using materials that are going to last a long time. We talk about, we were actually brought to our attention, the entry monuments in the community, so you'll see pieces of that and colors of that. So there's branding exercise that you went through, and I understand that some of that may change, but some fundamental, fundamentals of that are not going to change, and that is using limestone in that entry monument. We're doing the same thing here on our bridges, and you'll see that in a minute. And then just the community connections, honoring the history, and then context, so important to a project like this. We always say, we don't want somebody to mistake being here in Lakeville or Savage or Bloomington. We want to make sure people realize and remember that they're in Burnsville. So typically in these projects, what we'll do is we'll go through some press and imagery, so we'll look at other bridges and other bridge corridors to get an idea of if people like that. We'll look at materiality. Lighting is always important, so we'll look at other projects that have different types of lighting, railings. You'll see in a minute here that we paid attention to your existing arch specifically on, on the Parkway Bridge. And so we see that replicated in the railing. In the middle there, in the bottom, you'll see an insignia that isn't necessarily a logo, but nonetheless, it's insignia. And then walls, there are all kinds of different options for different walls that you would do. These are different types of walls, but at the end of the day, they all serve a purpose, and that's to help hold up a portion of the bridge. So we use all of those as opportunities to help tell the story, in this case, the story of Burnsville. So we went through several different concepts and presented that to the advisory committee, and this was one of them where we landed. And it's the idea that it's a gateway, so if you, it's sort of, I think I may have done this a few times, sort of opening up your arms and inviting people to come into the community. And think especially about as you're traveling from the south to the north, and how, once you get through this, this part specifically where these bridges are, you have even views of downtown Minneapolis and further north. So it is really a gateway feel. So this is what you told us, is that you like this idea of really opening up that bridge and making it feel welcoming to travelers on I-35, and, and also travelers on top of the bridge, on the Parkway Bridge itself. One concept that we looked as well had more to do with the colors. So it's hard to see in the screen, so I apologize, but these are more limestone colors in the brown that you see on your entry monument that's in the bottom corner there. And then please take note of the arch on top of that, the cap on top of that entry monument, because you're going to see that in a minute here, again, trying to, trying to pull the rest of the community into this, specifically the Parkway Bridge. So this is a computer-generated rendering. Hard to see, but we tried to do that, that welcoming with, we called the monoliths on the top of the bridge, made out of a form liner limestone, so a rougher cut limestone, which draws back to the history of, of the natural environment, the natural landscape. And then when we look at another image here in a bit, you'll see a more refined limestone that would be history, and then bringing history into the future, and how limestone is one of those important products in this community and specifically in this region in Minnesota in general. So this is an image you see a little bit better on, on the right-hand side of that, the monolith that is part of that entry monument. And it really serves a couple of different purposes. One is as you're traveling on I-35, but also as you're walking by it, because remember, we have pedestrian access on top of this bridge going from the heart of the city to other parts of this city and back again. And then you'll see some limestone. So once again, we're, we've introduced real limestone, and we're trying to salvage what's out there today, both on this project and Trunk Highway 13. So rather than throwing those into a landfill somewhere, we want to reuse them on the project. We'll not only save money, but it's, I think it's, we're being good stewards of the landscaping of the project by reusing that. This is in plan. Hard to see what's going on again because it is from, we'll call it the 5,000-foot level. But what's important to see here is those limestone walls that we started to take cues from the waves that you have in your current logo, city logo. Even though that, that logo may go away in the next couple of years, your lakes will not go away, and we know that that's an important part of this logo and an important part of your identity. So in plan, that's what those retaining walls are doing, is trying to mimic a little bit of the water movement, which is pretty iconic and important to your community. And then I'm going to call them four quadrants. So you'll see better in a minute here, these four quadrants that are on the bridge. When you told us that you wanted us to help preserve the history, we looked for opportunities there for people, we'll call them respite areas, so they can get off of the, the walkways and into these overlooks to either look downtown if you're on the north side, or on the south side, look to other parts of the community, and also a place maybe to recall some of the history, maybe taking some of those iconic pieces that are on your bridges today and, and have a place for them, and maybe even have a storyboard to talk about how important, what that element is and how important it is to your community. So a little better look of it here, so as you say, as I said earlier, we're coming down from the 5,000 or 10,000-foot level down to something a little bit more granular. So that's a picture of one of the, of the four quadrants there, and the landscaping that's in front of it. We've got trees. There is some lighting that's involved in this. This would be when, once someone is on the bridge, maybe either walking or on a bike, your logo there in the middle, that can change. That's one, just one section of the fence. So let's just say that the logo doesn't change in the next two, three, or five years, whatever it is. It's fairly easy to build, change out that one section of fence and put in your new city logo, if that's what you decide you want to do. This is a picture of the, one of the respite areas, and we're suggesting here that the railings would be all part of the project costs, probably not the brick, but we thought the brick was important because that does recall what you've already done in some of your sidewalks, specifically that going into the heart of the city. So these are just suggestions of maybe what you can do, but those would probably, the brick part would probably come out of your $350,000 budget, just like the bench would. And I'm going to show this picture here because it's a better image. The state will not pay for art or the placement of art, but that is the, coming directly off of your bridge, so it'd be salvaged when the bridge gets knocked down, put, put, maybe brought to a contractor that could sandblaste it and paint it. And then when the project's all done, that might be an opportunity for you to, again, recall some of the history and the importance of that element in your history. And then again, it's, it's a place for people to pull off to the side, and one would ask the question, boy, we're next to highways, is this really a place for respite? I don't know if you want to be there and read a book, but it certainly is a place, if you want to rest or meet somebody, or just take time out, it'd be a nice place to do that. So one thing I failed to mention, and I said this earlier, probably better to see it here, the arch of the bridge is, recalls the arch that's out there today. So that would actually be a railing, a safety railing. So today, you've got railing, but then you've got the big tube arch. The tube arch goes away, but the railing arch comes in. And right now, the plan is to put lighting in that arch, so you'll see this really nicely as you're driving by it or walking by it at night. Unfortunately, that probably would have to come out of that budget as well, but the project can build it. It's not something you'd have to come back afterwards. There'd have to be some sort of agreement in how that gets paid for, but certainly would be designed to be in the project itself. So that's really it in a nutshell. If there are any questions or comments, or really, it's, it's, we want to walk out here with the feeling that this, we've gone in a good direction, and the advisory committee has given us good direction, and we followed that direction in the product that you see here. Ultimately, we'd go into the manual, this, the project manual, the visual quality manual, and the final design team then would take that information as they're looking at the bridges, when they're doing abutments, when they're doing these wing walls that we talked about, these monoliths and whatever, and look to the manual for guidance as to what that should look like.
Any comments? I have a little...
We can utilize more of that land.
Sure.
Aesthetically, it's going to be gorgeous, actually.
That's awesome.
Nice job, committee.
Very nice.
Well, it's a nice, it's a nice group of people that we have. We have chamber members, we have community members, we have the county and us and Mindot.
We'll look at all of our hotels.
Yeah. So it's, yeah.
I could see people using those little butts for photo ops, you know, with the town in background.
Yeah.
Round photos, whatever. I could see it being highly utilized.
Well, it's one of the areas that I walk, when I walk and I go west to go around the park and then come back. That would be really nice. The only thing is, is that it is really loud.
Yeah.
That traffic is loud, but it's a beautiful view.
Yeah.
So just put on some headphones and then you...
It's all electric, they'll go.
Yeah. But I also like the fact that we'll put all of the electrical elements in, so if we don't do the lighting now, we can do the lighting later.
Yeah, so we'll put the conduits in the bridge to make sure that if, if, yeah, you didn't want to do that today, you could do it in the future.
Yeah.
I think that would be worth looking at. I think that would really make that bridge pop if we had that arch.
It would, and, and we should do it in the same way that we could change the colors of the lighting, just like we do with the Ames Center on the pillars on the Ames Center, where, you know, depending on what the occasion is, those pillars change.
Sure.
And we can do the same kind of thing with this.
Well, and I think, if you remember, we talked about these four quadrants, each of them representing a different part of history. So that would be part of the thing the city could do as a project to determine what that is, and, and to know if these elements that are on the bridge that we've identified are worth saving for part of that, that's just a decision you'd have to make, and we'd have to make sure that that gets into the final plans to say, these are the elements we want to save. And you can't see it very well, but the end of that, the end of the bench, we are suggesting that could even be a custom-made bench, and some of those pieces might be inserted into the side. So rather than throwing all that into a landfill somewhere, you could reuse some of those pieces, and that's part of your history and all the work.
We're about sustainability.
Yeah, absolutely.
So reuse it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Councilor Marbicelli.
I get to remember, this is the bridge, it's going to be here for at least 50 years. So we want to build something that is, for the next few decades, is continually, that looks good, meets the needs of the community. And I have to be very big on the lighting, I think, as I drive around the cities, or even in downtown Minneapolis, in the, when you see bridges that are...
Lit up.
...some really nice, excellent lighting. It, you know, it, it keeps the beauty going all night long that you see during the day, right? I mean, it lights up, it's a different look. And so I hope we can find a way through that, using a budget of $350,000 to get that only lighting. Yeah, I'm, the brick, we've, we've had some bad luck with brick falling apart in Minnesota winters. In our city, we reflect a lot of brick with concrete because it did not last. So as much as I like the look of it, unless we can find some brick that'll actually last, that might be a challenge.
Stamped concrete is a good look, too. The stamped concrete works really well.
Pressed concrete can give it a brick look.
There are just a few more slides, and they have... This is the Trunk Highway 13 bridge, so we're just moving north. And unfortunately, because this is a different kind of bridge, there isn't as much we can do here. And there was a decision, I think among the committee, to do as much as we can do, in this case, keeping with the limestone theme and the colors and this more refined limestone as the, in the, the center piers themselves. We did look at trying to do some sort of canted version that we saw on the, on the Parkway Bridge. Because of at least the way it is designed today, it was much harder to do here, but we haven't given up on that yet. But nonetheless, it's just not as exciting because we don't have the opportunities for that excitement. Pedestrians can't, can't drive on here either or can't walk on here. So it is literally a roadway type bridge. And so again, it limits to some of the things we can do. And just jumped to the end of the presentation, I didn't mean to do that. This is our Cliff Road Bridge. So you can see same, some similar elements. We're keeping with that family theme that can be used, not only in these three bridges, but in future bridges that you do on the corridor as well. This is showing the pedestrian realm underneath there, so folks can get underneath on Cliff Road next to the roadway itself, next to the rail line on the other side. And the thought here is that in trying to pull some pedestrian elements in here, we're showing actually pedestrian lights underneath there. So there might be a need to light that up to make it feel safe during the day, but regardless, at least at night, it would have a pedestrian feel to it because of the, the tall, the beam is being up so high and feeling so cavernous in there. The thought is that there would be pedestrian scale lights in here that would provide safety and inviting people. Now, this is one of the two options that is being considered. The other option is those piers get moved further and this area gets wider, but this was the one we picked. We thought it, it might best represent what we're intending to do from a pedestrian standpoint and making that feel welcome to connect to other regional trails and local trails from here.
Okay. Councilmember Keating.
Just a concern about how narrow the roadway is. And it is a Mendat question. Given the forecasted traffic changes over the next 15 years in that northwest quadrant, and I mean, it's, it's very industrial right now, but definitely in the next 15 years, there's going to be a lot of change up there. And is this going to accommodate the ability to widen the lane and add more lanes?
Yeah. When you're looking at this picture, just kind of looking at the bridge elements right now, we are working closely with the city and the county staff to come up with, you know, what that Cliff Road typical section looks like. So it will likely be more bigger than that.
Yeah, because it's a county road.
Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Quick question about the schedule. So with the timing of this, is that going to put handcuffs on a potential Niclet and Highway 13 project if that should materialize in the next four to five years?
So, no. We are looking, they're aware of the 13 Niclet project as soon as that was constructed is 2027, so after this work is done.
Okay.
We just have another year of training before it's awesome.
So realistically, the Niclet project couldn't really happen until 2027?
Yeah, we don't have the funding allocated, regional facilitation, funding allocations.
But if like a money fairy came from the sky and got the funding, it does, we, we would have to wait till 27 regardless of funding.
I mean, if, we would have to coordinate if we were to do it in 2026, there'd be a, a large amount of coordination with the Hill 35 project. I think it would make sense to wait till 2027, just to make sure that that, that is going to have so many lane changes and, and, you know, the different staging that Chad described.
Yeah.
That would be difficult, plus 13 bridges are being replaced with them. So we don't know the timing of the bridge replacements yet, so it just seems to me that we would wait till that project's completed before we were done with the training.
And we're, we're still a long way off in terms of, of the money.
Yep.
And so we're working hard on trying to get money to the federal government.
Be in there for five years.
And the state. And for Mendat. I was before testifying for that.
So, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, it sounds like there's concurrence that this is the direction on the aesthetic side, that you agree that it's moving in the right direction. We plan on doing an open house in the next few weeks to get this information out to the public. And so we wanted to make sure before we did that, that you're aware of what's going on, how it's come together. And then they'll finalize that manual, which as Chad indicated, it's not plans and facts, but it's, you know, the concepts that we use and design.
City Manager Lindberg, on the engagement vehicle, when we are out on Party on the Plaza and all of that, can some of this, these pictures be on it so that a lot more people can have their eyes on what this project is about and what the bridge work is going to look like?
Yep. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, certainly will work with our engineering staff to, to make sure that those visuals are provided to the community in a variety of forms.
One of the, one of the options we're considering for open house is going to Party on the Plaza.
Yeah. No, open houses are great, but you know, when you want to have people who don't usually come to open houses, but they're there for a party like Party on the Plaza or any of the other pop-up events that we have, it's always good to have more and more people have their eyes on it because then we get a lot of feedback, people understand what we're doing. That, for me, is the purpose, is to get more and more people understanding what we're doing here in the city.
Agreed. And, and so that is, we haven't finalized it yet, but we're working to see if we can get the, the design team to attend a Party on the Plaza in place of coming here for the.
Yeah.
We're still working through the details. There might be a lot of boards and that makes it a little bit more challenging, but we'll, we're working through those details.
Yeah. Well, because now you have the council's direction is that everybody is, is in agreement with the direction of what this is. So now you can say, okay, now it's for prime time for everybody to get their eyes on it. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have another scheduled meeting for the advisory group, the Visual Quality Advisory Group. One more meeting?
I think we have one more meeting.
Yeah. I was thinking that's what I saw. Yeah. Okay.
So, thank you.
And thank you so much for coming and thank you for your partnership.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Jen, I think the next one is yours as well, and this is the potential Gateway Trail.
Yeah, so as you're aware, there's a couple of apartment buildings under construction and they're nearing completion in Heart of the City on Gateway Boulevard, so the Villas and Concord Flats. And then the council approved the plat for the second addition, which is the Villas Two, which, another 111 units. And they, they're in for permits right now. So three buildings in this sort of triangle-shaped property. And then also the council had approved for a Heart of the City Trail connection, that one that's just south of Real Life. And then the, the city staff had looked at the condition of the sidewalk on Gateway and would it make sense? We are planning to do a Gateway Boulevard reconstruction on the street in 2024. So we are starting to look at that right now. What kinds of improvements might we make? The street is in bad shape, there's utility work to do, so Gateway Boulevard is planned for a 2024 reconstruct. There's a picture of the sidewalk and that picture was taken before the construction began. It's, it was in horrible shape before. So this trail would replace the old concrete sidewalk that's in poor condition. It would connect that HOC connector that the council already approved. And then as Chad had mentioned, Mendat is planning to construct a, a wide enough bridge for a 12-foot trail on the north side. So kind of putting the pieces together, the trail on Burnsville Parkway, the connector trail that was just authorized by council, this gateway connects everything together if we were to build a 10-foot Batum Minus Trail. So I reached out to the developer and I said, what are your thoughts on this trail in front of your two new apartment buildings? And they liked the idea. I said we would do it in 2024 with our street improvement and they had indicated, well, what if we do it now in 2023? We have construction crews out there, we're mobilized, it makes sense to just do it as, as we're finalizing our project, so this summer and fall. They had estimated the cost to be about $150,000 and their request was, they have on that second phase, that plat, a park dedication owed to the city of about $600,000. And they said, can you reduce our park dedication by that equal amount? So I'm here today to see if the council would like to proceed with that kind of agreement. And if so, we would come back to you to formalize it at your next council meeting on the 20th.
Yeah. It's really nice. And you've had a, a conversation with parks because we're taking, that's park dedication money.
I, I did talk to Garrett.
And everybody's in agreement. We're a happy camp.
I did not cry.
And, City Manager Lindberg?
I was already crying.
Is everybody in a group?
Mayor Council, the, the leadership team has discussed it, finances reviewed it. I think that it is a sound proposal and we're all in agreement on the staff side of things.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Well.
I will be back next weekend.
Jen, I think you have the direction that it's unanimous, let's get it going, especially when MWF is saying, hey, we'll do it and just use part of our park dedication fee.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was easy. Okay. And, and the next item is our athletic field fee policy discussion. And Garrett Beck, our Parks, Recreation and Facilities Director, is presenting this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, and welcome our user groups to the meeting this evening. Tonight, we will.
We have our user groups come to the table up here and you too, Scott.
Sure.
Thank you. So tonight's presentation is kind of a continuation from a meeting that took place on March 7th, where we were reviewing our, our policy 3.070, which was the scheduling of our youth outdoor athletic fields. That evening, council had a desire to invite our primary user groups that represent the Burnsville area to the table and just have an engagement conversation about field use and fees and whatnot. So this evening, I would like to go through, you know, the purpose is, is basically that, to, to have an engagement conversation, to hear from our user groups and to figure out how we want to move forward with this particular policy, wrapping up any refinements that we may need to do and, and whatnot. So tonight, my primary goal is kind of share the facts and history for those who may be listening for the first time online and for our guests and whatnot, but we'll take a look at our current practice, talk about when we do generate revenues from field use, what that looks like. I want to make sure that everyone understands what a basic and enhanced service is, which is different than actual just having access to the fields. We'll take a look at our market in Dakota County comparisons as far as what other cities do in this situation, talk about the community engagement that we had up to this point. And then if something was decided in, in the area of a fee charge, how that could possibly be implemented and whatnot. So the current practice is basically we have our local youth athletic associations that are nonprofit, they serve the Burnsville area, there is criteria for being one of those recognized groups. And essentially for practices in league play, those organizations work with Scott, who's here this evening, to identify their field needs. And what that means once those fields have been assigned is that for the most part, most of our fields are first come, first served. So a community member could go out there if a field wasn't being used and they could use it at 10:00 AM or they could be using it at 7:00. In the case where an organized group shows up to a field, a lot of times practices start sometime between 5:00 and 7:00 PM or games start sometime between 6:00 and 7:00 PM. If that group shows up and there are people out there using the field, they would be expected at that point to leave. So what this policy essentially does is it allows those groups to know that, hey, we're organizing youth activities. When we show up to the field, it'll be available for us based on the schedule that we have worked out with the recreation department. There are opportunities for people in our community and other groups that don't fit this criteria to work with the recreation department to also have a, a guaranteed opportunity when they show up to a field. It could be for a, a birthday party or a family gathering or whatever their needs may be. And in that case, Scott would work with our organizations if a field was one that was assigned to them to see if it would be available that night. If it was not available, then we would work within our system to try to find alternatives for it. But in that case, those groups would be charged a fee. So that's really the difference. That's what we're talking about tonight is when you show up to use a field, do you have the right to use it and is there a cost associated with that right to use it? So as I mentioned, the groups here this evening, they have the opportunity to show up to a field that has been assigned to them and they do that for free. There's not a cost associated with it and we've done that for decades. We have other groups, we have weekend tournaments, we have different things that take place throughout the year. And those, that represents the amount that we collect in, in field fees from groups other than the folks that are here this evening that are in that criteria. Again, I mentioned a basic service and an enhanced service. I was trying to think of the best way to describe this. If you went to Target Field tonight for a Twins game and you had the right to show up and use that field and, and that was free, you would know that when you walked in there, the field was there and you'd be able to use it. That's kind of the experience that our, our athletic associations have in the basic service. It is there, they have the right to be there, they can use it in the appropriate way. And an enhanced service, if you wanted ball boys and girls to be there and if you wanted lines put down and if you wanted someone to come out and change the bases in the seventh inning, that would be an enhanced service. And there is a fee associated with that because it requires staff time, extra equipment, extra materials and things like that. So we have, for, again, for decades, we have worked out a, a cost associated with that and is completely voluntary for the associations to participate in that if they want to. If they don't, then they can use the field for free and it's the basic experience. If they want the enhanced service, then that is what we will provide. It was particularly challenging in COVID years and other things, but we do whatever we can to make sure that we work with them to provide that experience that they're looking for if they're choosing to pay for the enhanced service. Oops, I jumped on. So how does what we are doing compare to our market cities? That's one of our benchmarks that we use. And also our folks here are often competing and well-connected with Dakota County. So we also took a look at, you know, how are our neighbors doing and things like that? So for our market cities, we see on the, on the slide here that five of our market cities pay, seven do, or, I'm sorry, yeah, five pay, seven do not pay, and one has a combo situation. Then that combo.
Seven is like us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. That. That combo situation is a situation where their in-house programs do not pay for fees for field use. Their traveling programs do. So I didn't know how to categorize that, so I called it a tie. And then in Dakota County, you see that four are like us and three, or four pay, three do not. And one is also not only a market city, but it's the same city there. So and then you can kind of see the range and what the average cost is for those that do have paid situations. So at the end of the day, we're it's really it's like flipping a coin. It's pretty close on the difference between who's doing what. And for the most part, everybody, you know, they're doing it the exact same way, whether they're charging or not charging. How they implement it is pretty much the same. So again, this after the March 7th meeting and the desire to have the meeting tonight, I worked with Scott, and we had some phone conversations. We had some email conversations. We actually did a Teams meeting about this topic at one point. And then we ultimately, the final thing that we did was we sent out a survey to asking the president of each association only, so it was just one vote. The simple question of, are you interested in paying a fee in the future for the ability to use a field? And then if they answered yes to that, it would prompt them to go. The second question was, if yes, what would be a reasonable amount? And I believe we listed $5, $10, $15, or other. As you can see from the screen here, all of our associations indicated no, they are not interested in doing that. And Lakeville Athletic Association, they are a very small part of Burnsville. The facility, the field that they have available is not a primary field in any way. And we just simply have not gotten a response back from them throughout this entire process. So we also, again, after all that, they were invited to attend tonight's meeting, and we're happy to have them here. So and then the last, oh, as far as the, I mentioned that pretty much how cities implement it is the same. For the cities that do charge fees, they basically will say at the end of the season, how many participants were in your in-house baseball program, or in your travel baseball program, or in your soccer program? And then those organizations will report how many participants they had. And then they will be asked to then, based on what the agreement is, the city would then invoice them and say, okay, you had 100 participants. Your fee is $5. Please send us a check for $500, basically. So and then the portion of the slide below there just kind of indicates we, when we were reaching out to our athletic associations, we asked them for, what were your numbers in 2022? Just to give an idea that if something like this was implemented, we would be looking if we did a $5 charge per participant, the city would generate just over $11,000. A $10 charge would be $23,000. And then a $15 charge would be $34,000. So you kind of understand the financial implications of something like this. And with that, those are the facts as I know them this evening. And I would entertain any questions about anything that I've shared tonight or welcome the dialogue to begin with our guests.
I want to thank you all for coming to us. You know, Burnsville, we always want to understand your voice. You're the users of all of the fields that we have, and you've been great partners throughout these many decades. So thank you for the work that you do in enriching the lives of our youth, both young men and young women in all of the different athletic initiatives that you put forth. So thank you so much. And thank you for sharing your thoughts. I didn't expect that you would want to pay. Because once you have something that you've been doing for free, and it's been working well for all of you. The other thing that I also want to commend you on is that I know that you do scholarships for our youth that don't have the wherewithal or the financial wherewithal from their families to be a part of our athletic games. But you do, I believe, because you still do those scholarships, right? Because I remember.
Yeah, for Burnsville Athletic Club, anybody who has free or reduced meals gets some level of reduction off of their fees.
Yeah.
And then we also do for the high school, we also provide up to four $1,000 scholarships each year to seniors. So we've been giving back for 60 plus years.
Because I remember when my children were part of the athletic, VAC and all of that back in the day. You know, in looking at the policies and procedures, and I like the fact that you did that. So always paid and give more money.
And actually, it's, we continue to try to do that. We're actually trying to develop more and more. We'd love to see more development because we actually lose, I don't know about, I don't know about Apple Valley, but I know for Burnsville, we continue to lose numbers. Prior to COVID, we probably had, you know, over 2,000 participants during a summer program. Now we're down to about 650 to 670. Many of the kids that would get a scholarship, either they don't want to play, or they don't have enough information. But we'd love to be able to provide more of that. So and what we've done, speaking as well with Apple Valley, we've done a lot of fundraising. So that's the big thing. We tried to keep fees as much as we can flat and try to raise money through pizza sales or whatever.
Okay, that's wonderful. Let us know when you have fundraisers, because I go to the high school fundraisers for athletics because that helps with those programs. But I've never gotten an invitation from you guys about your fundraiser. So why is that?
I'm pretty sure one of us probably has some coupon cards. We could run out to the car really quick.
Well, you know, we want to help, but we can't help if we don't know.
Usually 20 bucks. Just keep a lot of 20s available.
Yeah. Yeah. But because I like that fact that you help out some of our youth. And Burnsville has changed quite a bit. So I think today they need more of that than when it was back in the 90s when my kids were part of the program.
Can I ask you a question? Not to get political, and I don't want to be political about this. But as you know, in the state of Minnesota now, we're going to be providing free lunches for the students. How are you going to measure for going forward?
Yeah, we've actually talked, we brought that up, not last meeting, but the prior meeting, when Governor Walz passed that. It does become an issue because currently, we have a piece of paper that basically a person comes and says, hey, here's what I qualify for. We're not quite sure yet, at least for us.
I think the schools are struggling with that, too.
There's, I believe, we've had that same question come up on the Valley Athletic Association side. And it's my understanding right now, and again, this is probably still something to be worked out, but there is still some additional services that would normally fall under that free and reduced lunch that families could still apply for. So there would still be some sort of process involved that they could present paperwork and things of that nature.
I'm just hearing that some of the schools are worried that people won't apply for anything because they're going to get the lunches anyhow, and so they won't feel the need to do that. Like, you guys have a hard time getting the word out. They're going to have a hard time getting the word out, too, I believe.
And when you talk about the free and reduced lunch, that's actually one, you know, that I, at least for the, you know, the Apple Valley, the side of town where, you know, we draw a lot, a decent amount from Burnsville. But, you know, the same would apply to VAC. You know, you're talking about the free and reduced lunch. That's a big portion of it. And I'm not sure when reaching out to cities, which cities we're reaching out to for comparisons. But, you know, just the free and reduced lunch percentages, you know, within Burnsville, 67% are on free and reduced lunch. You know, the Apple Valley side that would draw to, you know, VAA, we're at 48%. Those are some of your highest ranges. You know, Prior Lake is a neighboring one. They're down at 19%. So, you know, that would be when I'd be cautious to make sure it's an apples-to-apples comparison because it's just not the same anymore.
Yeah, well, I think that's something that you all need to work on, and then let us know how you're doing that. So it's your policy, you know, you're the ones. But City Manager Lindberg, do we on our website allow for some of them to put up their scholarship with all of the, like the VAC and the Apple Valley associations and all of?
I would have to check, Madam Mayor. I don't know that there is a place, but I would have to check.
Okay. Because it'll be a good way for us to communicate. Once you have your procedure in place and you have, you understand how you're going to do that. Yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Keely.
One of the reasons that I brought this up is I'm big on fair, equitable, level playing fields for everybody, access, and trying not to play favorites to any one group and cutting out others. And so part of that was my thinking behind this concept. The money is beside the point. It was really all about just the principle of how do we, is the system that we have. And that was the reason for going through this exercise is for a lot of us that it may be 10, 15 years since the last time we had any kind of discussion like this. But for all of us to just open it up, make it very transparent, and have an open public discussion so we all understand exactly how the rules are set out and played, and who's all the player, et cetera. So it was all about fair and equitable. I'm guessing that you're all, if you're associated with a nonprofit organization, you're volunteering your time. Hats off to you. Bless you for that as somebody. And I know we all participate in nonprofits. Running a nonprofit is an enormous amount of time. And, you know, you do it because you have a passion for it, right? A passion for the kids, whatever the effort is. So thank you for all your work. This is a question for Garrett. After going through this, sort of, you know, you live in this world. You administer. But having, going through this process where you're sort of digging up everything, kind of looking through it, going through the evaluation, the comparisons to the cities, good point about the sort of the imbalance of family incomes, where Burnsville has a very, very high number. Would you say, based on everything that you've learned, is this system that we have today as fair and equitable as we could possibly create? Minus having any kind of field access fee?
Councilmember Keely, I think off the top of my head, my belief, you know, I've been aware from, I started here in 1998, and I was in Scott's position at that time and was the liaison to the athletic associations. This was a discussion question back then. It's a discussion question now. These are philosophical questions from a city's leadership perspective. On one side of the equation, our athletic associations are a group of volunteers, as you indicated. And they are providing services out to our community in ways that if they weren't here doing the work, we would not be able to provide those services. We would, we couldn't hire enough people, pay enough coaches, and keep the fees at a reasonable amount to have the impact that these volunteer organizations have in our communities and around the state and around the country, right? So from that philosophical perspective, our ability to provide these facilities to them is our contribution to the whole process, right? The flip side is every community is dealing with budgetary challenges. And it costs money to maintain these facilities and to improve them and to keep them relevant and up to date, right? And we saw tonight, it's a small amount, but it's still an amount. At the same time, I know our organizations, you know, we talked at the last meeting, they've contributed hundreds of thousands to millions of dollars to our park system to help us with that, too, right? So I'm not going to give you a clear answer tonight other than saying I completely understand both sides of the equation philosophically on why there's a need or interest to pursue either one of them.
Well, if you use ours as an example, the dollar amount is, you know, at $5. And a lot of the cities seem to be 10. That seemed to be the average, so it was $20,000. For the cities that you spoke to that do have the fee, over the last 10 years, did you get a sense as to when they implemented and why? Was it literally just, you know, the philosophy is, okay, let's try and recover some of the cost, even though it's a tiny fraction of what the real cost is, right? But there's more to it, right? This is really good public-private partnership because we're providing the fields, they're providing the volunteer workforce, the fundraising, and donating and contributing to the betterment of those fields, right? So it's really the ideal scenario. So why are some of these cities choosing to add a fee? That from your conversations?
Yeah. As I looked at the list, there were not many new partners to the situation that have started charging fees or other cities. And so I think most of the time, it is 100% associated with the fact that it's expensive to maintain these facilities, and here's our chance to recover some of the costs, right? You know, from an access and equitable situation, I think our recreation department and the athletic associations do a great job of meeting the needs of our community when there's a field. And I think I shared last meeting, have we ever turned away someone from a field and said, no, you can't use that one on that date? Yes. But we can almost always say, oh, we have another option. And there's been some unique situations where we can't. But we want to see people out there using the fields. We want to see them learning and growing and having fun and having a good experience. And this has been a successful way to do it. It doesn't mean that the other way is a wrong way to do it either, right? It's just a different way of doing it.
Sure. Well, and I appreciate the, what you shared. I had no idea that there's that kind of precipitous drop in participation. That is, that's a cliff. That is a dramatic reduction in participation. And so, you know, Councilmember Workman brought up at our last meeting that when we roundtabled this, that he'd be more interested in finding a way to make the cost lower to try and get more people to participate. And I think that concept rings more true after hearing your data of participation than anything else because there is a, and there's been a trend. We've seen it in the city of Burnsville, basketball, football, you know, baseball, the traditional sports, as our community has changed quite dramatically. Soccer is, you know, the majority of our new residents, they only play one sport, and it's soccer, period end. And it's not even traditional soccer, American soccer. It's more European or the footsball soccer, which is a different sort of foot skills as opposed to a marathon run back and forth to the field, right? It's much more compact. So that's, you know, that's where that demand is, I guess. Or maybe that's where there's a lot of participation, but not in necessarily those traditional. But I can't imagine how the, or why the pandemic would have had that much impact on VAC's participation. Like, you know, everybody got outside because you couldn't go inside. Just, sorry to hear that, I guess. I just, I don't know what to say except wow, that is a dramatic drop. And hopefully, there's a way to get kids back involved. I know I got my grandson, as a five-year-old, into VAC mites, as we were talking earlier. And it's great. And the fields that the city provide are fantastic. Our home field is Chateau Lynn. We just played last night, and the field was drugged since the last time we played there last week. And there's some other fields that we play on that the city doesn't own that are atrociously bad. The grass, the dirt, it's just left and never maintained. And so we really enjoy playing on the city fields because the quality is dramatically better. And I appreciate the quality of the field. It didn't have stripes and lines, but, you know, mites don't run in straight lines anyway. They run in a big circle. So anyway, I don't know what we can do, but clearly, you know, this is not a money thing. Not for 10,000 or 20,000. That's not. I get we do have, and Garrett and I talked about this, we do have rising costs. At some point, we're going to have to get our arms around it. But with declining participation at that level, you know, what fields are we going to need to provide five or 10 years from now? Based on the usage demand, that could be changing.
Yeah, because I think when I look at what's developing, Garrett, I don't know how many soccer teams we have. But I also like the fact that we're growing a cricket group. Now, you started that last year, right, Scott? And you're continuing it this year, which means that last year you had quite a few participants. And now you're starting more. So there is a change because we are a different community. So soccer and.
Well, pickleball, is VAC and VAA added pickleball?
Well, pickleball, has BAC and VAA added pickleball and, and footsall soccer types of, you know, because that's certainly gone crazy, and it's, and it's into the younger generation. I don't know if it's got down to, you know, elementary and high school type of thing, but certainly, footsall soccer is...
Yeah, actually, VAA is looking at adding several, several different sports, pickleball being one of them. Actually, Apple Valley is looking at a parks referendum right now that has kind of varied in size a little bit, and one of those is adding a lot of pickleball courts in different areas. I don't know if anyone plays it or lives near one, but, you know, they're, it's fun to play, but not real hot with the neighbors.
Yeah.
It's really loud tennis.
Yeah.
But, you know, just, just as a, you know, kind of an added-on thing to talk about, you had mentioned, mentioned youth football and the numbers declining there. You know, that's something that we've seen, not just in Burnsville. That's, you know, there's a lot of different aspects to that, but just that one sport alone, you know, we see, we've seen numbers decline to where VAA had an in-house program at one time where we could have six teams at a grade level competing. That's down to one team at a grade level now.
Wow.
And that's just the natural trend. It's not exclusive to just us. But, you know, one of the things that we notice is, we'll have smaller teams as kids get older, because kids find different things they want to do. They don't want to play footballs. They get older sometimes. But then in ninth grade, you know, we'll see numbers go up 30, 35%. Kids come out of the woodwork. And that's one of the things that some of our varsity coaches will reach out and like, "Did you play youth"? Well, no, we didn't. "Why did you not play youth"? And the answer is usually the same. We, even with a 50% discount, we couldn't afford it. And we couldn't get, you know, we couldn't get to the games. You know, the school will provide you transportation.
Right.
So even with a 50% discount, you know, sometimes it's, they just, they still can't swing it. You know, and that's, there's some of those sports, football being one of them, where it's just, it, it's an incredibly high cost to maintain, just with the equipment, you know, tight regulations on what you can do with helmets, how long you can have those. You know, so that's a, you know, that's, that's, I guess, one anecdotal piece of evidence that shows that, you know, the cost is, on our end, is a, you know, a huge thing we have to watch.
Interesting. I had a conversation with the mayor of Apple Valley regarding pickleball. But, you know, in terms of where they're going to place it, is it taking away from And that's the pressure and the challenge, because now if they're going to place it on some of the property that they have, are they taking it away from fields that are for soccer or football or baseball or, and that's part of their discussion, as I understand it? Because there is not that, they're still growing, but I don't know if the city has any more land for, for parks, amenities.
On our side, well, what we, what we call our side of town is, as most of the other associations would point out, everyone's pretty territorial about their, their areas.
Yeah, no, I understand because of where...
So, you know, on our side of town, there's not a lot of room for, for expansion, you know, more in the, toward the, you know, the Rosemount side and the Eastview High School side, you know, there's, but it's, it's tight. I don't think, I don't think the city of Apple Valley has a field that is not, not used for something. And I know even, just working with, with Scott, I know, and these, as far as scheduling fields, these guys do a great job for us.
Yeah. Because west side of Apple Valley, that come, 196 that comes into Burnsville, you have nothing. There is nothing there. Okay. Councilmember Gustafson.
Actually, this is for Garrett. Do we have any underutilized fields in Burnsville that you're aware of?
Councilmember Gustafson, yeah, you know, one of the things, and again, is if you, for later this evening, when we talk about strategic plans and things like that, several years ago, we started looking at our, you know, as facilities reach end of life, our park system's 30 to 40 years old, right? When it, when the amenity was selected, where it was placed, why is it there, those questions are always asked, right? So, I started working with Scott several years ago, and he reached out to the athletic associations to find out, you know, what fields are you using, which ones are you not? And as we're looking at, you know, a backstop that is, is rusting, and it's going to cost X number of thousands of dollars to replace, or do we consider removing it because the athletic associations are not using it at all, right? Of course, that impacts the neighborhoods and the kids' ability to walk out of their house and go down and play with friends and whatnot. So in some cases, we're opting towards leaving a backstop in place and, and having grass there instead, where you can still play a pickup game and do some different things, but you don't have to drive a tractor there and drag it and have those resources involved and manpower and, and people power. And possibly then, if you don't do that, then you have grass growing through it, and it doesn't look good, right? So, we have actually removed a, a few of our red rock surfaces and have identified some others to be removed. And in none of those situations, again, with, with Scott and the associations working closely together, should it impact their, how they deliver their program?
I ask the question because I'm just kind of wondering, as, as we go into some of our neighborhoods with the underutilized areas, as we're going to redo them, do they, we just fix them back up to do what they've always done, or do we look at what our new demographics are up to and start building fields and things like that to accommodate our new generation of residents in our city? Slowly kind of transform parks that aren't being utilized for a purpose that used to be baseball, but now nobody plays it over there or something any longer, and so, is that a good time to put a soccer field in, or, or what Dan's been talking about with that practice soccer thing?
Yes, and if you're asking me, I, I think we always have asked that question, and we always should. And by removing a red rock surface and leaving a backstop, you can play soccer there, and you can also, you know, a, an adult and a, and a couple of kids can go down there and still have the backstop and, and do some bat-and-ball type activities. And, and so it's more multipurpose than it is, you know, just working with one particular type of activity.
Thanks, Garrett.
Okay. Members of the council, do you have anything else? Or any of our partners, do you have any comments you want to make? What I do understand is, don't change it. Don't give you, don't charge you.
Yeah, the only, the only comment I would make at a mayor is, you know, from like, for instance, BAC's perspective, we're currently paying, you know, $11,600 for enhanced services. And I'm telling you, the guys in the parking wreck do a great job. We absolutely love Scott coming to our meetings. He adds a flavor to our meetings, which is great, and he also does a heck of a job as well. All the folks that do work for us during our tournaments and stuff, they're great. I had the opportunity multiple years ago to coach traveling baseball, and a number of those kids were on staff, and it was always fun to see them at our tournaments to help, and they were helping out. So it was easy to sort of direct them, because at one point, I was their coach, and so we had that, that relationship. You know, currently, if you look at our numbers, we're paying about $17 a participant now. If you, if you divide our 650 by the 11, you know, the 11.6. So from a, from our perspective, and I hope our numbers don't stay like they are, I mean, we hope that they go up, so that number would come down. But ultimately, it's really, really difficult for us as a club to keep, trying to keep our fees amenable to the, to the, you know, to the community and keep them low, and still be able to take on more fees. So that, I would, I, if we had any chance, that's why I said no. It'd be like, we're already sort of paying already. We really can't afford much more, unless we, at some point, we're going to have to pass it on to our, to the people, and I think that potentially could impact it even more negatively.
Okay. Counsel, what do you want to do?
Elizabeth?
I'm good leaving it as is.
Just leave it as is. Okay.
I'd like to maintain the status quo, but I really would like us to look at a way of how we can partner better with these associations and, because they, you know, as Garrett pointed out, today, they do a lot of work for the city, for our citizens in the city, so how do, how do we don't make them successful? And I know we're already doing a lot now, but is there other ways we can get engaged with our association?
Well, I think City Manager and our leadership team can have that kind of conversation, because I do know that with BA 191, we do a lot with them, and we have good partnerships with them, like we do with all of you. But when, you know, they needed a scoreboard, they raised the money for that, didn't they?
Garrett, those kids in Florida.
At BA 191, over at La, at Alumagnet?
Historically, Madam Mayor, BA 191 has been a partner in some of the improvements over there.
Yeah.
Typically, they help to create new things, and then they become assets of the city that we maintain long-term.
Yeah.
So, we recently replaced the scoreboard over there. They were not a partner this time around in that process, but thankfully, the Burnsville Lions Club, Burnsville Savage Lions Club was, so...
Always, we always find partners.
Yeah.
But I remember it was with BA 191, wasn't it Dodger Burnsville, who was the sponsoring partner for that scoreboard? And then this time around, it was the Lions Club.
Yep.
Yeah.
I hear that's correct, yep.
Yeah. So, we'll continue to work with the partnerships in, you know, Burnsville has always been great about partnering and finding resources, both financially and, and volunteers, to make our programs work for our, for our children. So, and thank you for everything that you all do. So, City Manager Lindberg and Garrett, it's, keep doing the great work that we're doing with our partners.
If anybody's interested, the Mites Nationals team, which is my team, is playing the Keeley Athletic Team tomorrow at William Byrne at 6:00.
[laughing]
William Byrne. Okay. And I think we smoked them last time, even though we don't keep score.
[laughing] I'm sure I can film that one.
So, what, what field and at what time?
Byrne Number Two at 6:15 tomorrow.
Oh.
Well, the field be dragged.
Thank you so, thank you so much for taking the time to come in and, and talking with us. You're very important to all of us with all that we do for our, for our youth, for our children. So, thank you.
Appreciate you, Captain.
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Councilmembers.
And thank you, Garrett and Scott, for the work that you do in helping with our youth.
Madam Mayor, following up on your Lions comment, I'd be happy to announce on camera that the Lions Club has sponsored the Burnsville Festival's brand-new inflatable zone, and we thank them very much, the Lions Club. As you said, you always find partners. They've, they've stepped up. Last year, they did our Friday Night Fireworks. This year, they're going to sponsor the, the brand-new inflatable zone, which would be near the entrance, so you'll see the big, giant, colorful inflatables, and happy to have Lions Club back.
And that's a much nicer amenity, because it's all day and two days, rather than 20 minutes of fireworks.
Yeah, I wish it was 20 minutes.
This one is, this, this has a long, enjoyable timeframe.
Yes. Yeah, that's great. I just met with Ronnie today to pick up the check and met your Lions gambling manager, and wonderful, wonderful lady, a lot of energy, a lot of ideas, and she shared with me the changing model of being in the gambling business with pull tabs.
It's very difficult. People don't realize...
The bars got smart.
Yeah.
And started to take on a lot themselves.
And, and, and you know, we don't have that many, and the one, and a lot of the bars that we have here in Burnsville, I mean, the Hockey Club dominates. I think Clive is in the Hockey Club.
Yeah.
And they're there. They're not going to move out of Clive.
And they, that's the, the group, the Burnsville Hockey Club, their, their gambling division or whatever, their, their pull tabs, and they do our bingo at the festival. So, where, they've been a partner of the festival for a few years now.
Well, and the other one is that, is it South Metro Athletics are at Racks? And when Racks opened, they started there, and they, and, and they're, they fund Bloomington and some of our athletics, but it's mostly Bloomington, isn't it?
Madam Mayor, I, I believe as we've looked at opportunities to expand, we've noticed the Hockey Club and Metro Baseball League are at a couple of the different ones. I think those are the two clubs or programs that are out there frequently.
Yeah, because we don't have that many bars in Burnsville where Lions are in.
Right.
And we have one in Savage, McHugh's.
We have a few in Savage.
Yeah, and here we have, is it the Muddy Chicken?
Mm-hmm.
And we have Carboni's, and I think that's all we have in Burnsville. So, for us, it's really tough right now with income.
Well, and the nice thing about the Lions, look at all the various areas that you donate back to. It's not one necessarily well-deserved athletic organization that runs it, but the Lions donates to, you know, the city, festivals, Savage.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah. Well, good. Congratulations. Thank you, Garrett.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we're going, that was the last of our agenda, and we're going to roundtable. Councilmember Workman?
I got nothing.
Nothing?
Councilmember Schultz?
Nothing.
Well, I'm going to break that chain of nothing.
Councilmember Keeley.
Real quick, I'll try and go through this as fast as possible. It's transportation. One of the items you got presented tonight, so I don't have to go over it, but the STA legislative result, our lobbyists had to fight in really close combat to keep the transportation bill audited and maintain language in it, when it kept going back to the reviser's office after committee hearings, to main, to make sure that microtransit was being funded. It, it literally took our lobbyists, following the bill every stop of the way, and going, "No, no, no, it, it, it lost the language. This is something that needs to be in," and then they have to get everybody back together. "Oh, yeah, that's right, that's supposed to be in there," and then it would get pulled out again through another phase, and they'd have to get it back in. And in the end, they were literally doing that same thing multiple times, right up in the 11th hour, to get microtransit funded within the transportation bill and to have suburban providers spelled out in the transportation bill with the funding going to Met Council. And then we also received, MBTA received about, just shy of $6 million in one-time money to help acquire buses and some facility approvals. So, overall, good session for transportation for, from an MBTA standpoint or suburban providers. We just had our MBTA strategic planning retreat at the Omni Hotel at Viking Lakes, very nice facility. SRF Consulting led us, and we did some nice polling using mentee meter on our phones and, and put them up live on the, on the screen and threw various serious questions. But ultimately, what came out of that whole exercise, which was basically a SWAT exercise, was microtransit is still anticipated to grow at a rapid pace. We are doing, we're in the middle of a BRT study on County Road 42, which started a few months back. We're learning a lot. We were doing some pilot transit suburb-to-suburb on County Road 42, and early numbers are weak, but these pilot programs are about longevity, marketing, people getting, you know, being aware of the fact that there is a bus, the timing, etc. So, we're doing the study to really get a better understanding on how we can better utilize that particular quarter as a BRT route. It's really more of an arterial BRT. It's the first time one of the suburban transit providers has ever done their own funded BRT study. Normally, all of those are done by Met Transit, and mostly in downtown, as you can imagine, Minneapolis, St. Paul. So, microtransit, 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 and Met Council funding issues came up. We're concerned about the, the history there, still concerned, but we're making some endroads with our relationship with the Met Council and Met Transit folks. And I can report a little side story. We were at the Friday morning transportation, the Chamber Transportation Forum, we'll call it, and Minda presented, MBTA presented, Ms. Desroot, who's gone now, presented. We all talked about all the transportation projects going on in the city over the next few years. And Adam Harrington from Met Transit was there. He comes to our I-35 Solutions meetings and presented recently, and he is a huge fan of Buck Hill. He's a big biker, loves to do the bike races, dirt bike racing, mountain bike racing, I guess you call it. And Dave and Chip Solner were there, and they, and they asked if we could have a little sidebar afterwards. And they, they've got parking challenges at Buck Hill. When they have their Wednesday car show, it has gotten so big, it's taken over their entire 600 parking spot. entire six hundred parking spot, parking lot, which means spectators don't have a place to park other than the streets around the neighborhoods. They run shuttles to the mall, they have got to deal with the mall, but they would like to use, and have been trying, and Dave came to me about a year ago, and we've been working with Met Transit but getting, uh, rebuffed, uh, about three or four different ways. And, um, to, we wa- they would like to just use, um, Met Transit's Kendrick Trail, uh, ramp, which is only used, uh, right now, only getting about a third of its use. So there's two-thirds capacity available. Six hundred parking spots, four hundred available every day. And so, um, we had a nice chat, and Adam was a big fan, being a big fan of, of Buck Hill, uh, asked who he's been talking to and why he was getting, and doesn't understand why he was getting no's, and there's a way to figure that out. So with MBTA standing there, uh, Matt, um, Fighton, who came over from Southwest, who now works for MBTA, myself, and Dave, and Chip, and, and Adam, we had a great, great conversation, and we're going to have some follow-up meetings to help, to see if MBTA can provide, uh, transit buses, and Met Transit can allow use of that transit station, uh, which is a lot closer than the mall to Buck Hill. And, uh, so, good things come out of, and that, and that's really just kind of, I guess, feeding into building that relationship between, um, MBTA and, and Met Transit. And then, uh, user experience and technology were the other, was the other item that really came out. Um, end-user convenience, uh, apps, um, connecting transit agencies. So, uh, basically, my, my synopsis of that and my comments in that area were pretty, uh, were pretty lengthy and, and, and strong, that look at things through the eyes of the user. Forget that it's Southwest, and MBTA, and Met Transit, and Maple Grove, and Plymouth, uh, or Uber and Lyft, uh, or the, you know, the, the trains. Build an app or a system that works together, so when a person needs to go from here to here, uh, they can get there. They don't really care what's, you know, what, what's the label on the outside of the, the car, or the van, or the bus, or the train. They just want to be able to go from here to here as most conveniently as possible. And, and incorporating, of course, on-demand, like, um, whether it's Uber and Lyft partnerships, which are being incubated right now by Southwest, and it's going very well. Or MBTA's Connect service, which is door-to-door within our trade area. So, a lot of great things came out of that. Uh, I-35 Solutions, um, they, uh, presented the overlay project, uh, on I-35 corridor between Cliff and, uh, Cassa, uh, Fifty and Lakeville. So this is a Burnsville-Lakeville, uh, type of deal, um, and, uh, very, very important corridor, obviously. And then, uh, MINDA at our May I-35, which I hadn't, I think the dates didn't line up, um, for, presented their twenty-year state highway investment plan and, uh, engagement with, uh, the general public and et cetera. So, a very, very deeply involved presentation, uh, with a long-term look. So, that is it for transportation.
Okay. Good. Um, I think most, um, notably and important, I mean, um, MLC, the Municipal Legislative Commission, uh, we had our meeting, and the meeting had to do with recapping what happened during the legislative session, and all of us are pretty much aware of that. But one of the important things is that, uh, MLC recognized the work that, uh, Senator Port did for housing, um, and local control, making sure that we maintain local control. And, um, so that whole effort from housing first didn't move forward. And, uh, and, and a lot of different things that she had done. So she was recognized, and there was a, a, a lot of issues that were, issues of, a part of the MLC's priorities, like housing and homeownership, tax policy and local issues, transportation and infrastructure, you already spoke to that, public safety, uh, and you all received the, um, information with regard to what the allocation was for, uh, public safety. Uh, it was in Greg's, um, um-
Weekly update.
Weekly update. And, uh, and then adult use of marijuana and the workforce and economic, um, expansion. So that was good. And we were able to, again, hold the, um, our grant, our, making sure that our grant with, um, host fees. So, that was good. And then, of course, everything else, I already reported on our Savage-Burnsville. We meet every other month. Metro Cities, that policy committee doesn't start till July. And, uh, and International Festival, we're all ready to go for July. So all things are good. Anything from staff's point of view?
Uh, just a quick note from me. I left a book at each one of your, uh, each one of your places. It's actually something that we're going to share across the organization with our managers, as you all are well-aware, uh, aligned with our commitment to building organizational culture, your strategic priority. Um, uh, our OD team, Bethany, our leadership team, has been, uh, very focused on building culture through our managers. So, this past week, uh, a group of five of us were in Omaha for, for the Gallup at Work Summit. Uh, every year, Gallup brings together, uh, folks internationally to Omaha, where, uh, where their headquarters is. Um, and this year was all about creating thriving workplaces. So, um, I, I think most notably, both, uh, Jim Clifton, who's now taken over as, as the CEO of Gallup's organization, and Jim Harder, their chief scientist, presented, um, on, uh, on their new work around, around culture and, uh, kind of the state of the current workplace. Uh, so, uh, great time for the, a, a, a few of us, um, some really strong takeaways. I included just a, the kind of a flyer of some of the things, so one page of some of the things that we're thinking about right now. Certainly highlights on how are we going to be a leader in the space of taking care of the mental health of our employees? Uh, the, the statistics are staggering around engagement and thriving workplaces when it comes to caring for, uh, and really leaning into the realities of mental health. We experienced that a lot, uh, certainly in our public, on the public safety side of community service. Uh, I, I was very inspired coming out to think about how are we being that creative on the employment side of things? So we're talking as a team, actually, tomorrow as a leadership team, uh, about how we might do some of, uh, some of that care for each other better as an employer, in our work, in our workplace. Uh, so that's something I'm very excited about. Um, we spend a lot of hours at work, uh, and, and the data are around expectations and how, how people are either, either emotionally attached or detached to their work is pretty staggering. As a matter of fact, Gallup's research says that, that nineteen percent of people worldwide who are working, uh, would, would identify themselves as miserable. Not just miserable at work, but miserable in their lives. Uh, and that really ties back to, um, to asking ourselves questions and, and taking action, uh, that is about creating not only thriving, thriving work culture, uh, but a place where people can thrive, uh, to, to be part of a change of that reality. And really, for me, that's all about the good of the community, right? We talk a lot about, about caring for and creating greater experiences in our organization for our people to do the same, uh, for the community. Uh, so very, very much motivated and inspired to continue to work, uh, on developing our culture in meaningful ways. Uh, and I'll, I'll end with this. One of the things, and I know you've seen this, but one of the things that I've done is, is pulled together across, uh, a cross-section of the organization, a representative group of about thirty-five employees, uh, that, uh, I'm calling our culture team, because I'm not creative, uh, but really, uh, it's, it's all about hearing directly from, uh, the diverse voices across our organization about how I can and how we as a leadership team, uh, can create more involvement in, and enthusiasm around the work that we're doing and our workplace. Uh, so our, our commitment from a leadership level i- is to, to not only be advised by people who represent, right, our organization, uh, but then really take action, uh, to, to build culture in meaningful ways. So, uh, I certainly appreciate the council's support in that. Uh, I, I can't tell you how many times I had a conversation just in three days in Omaha about the council's strategic priority around organizational culture, and kind of the look of, "Oh, that'd be nice." Uh, certainly, uh, for people who understand the world of local government and how government works. So, um, very enthusiastic, very excited about what we're doing. We have a long road, uh, ahead of us, uh, to, to do our work well and to really care for our people, uh, but we've got a great foundation and great momentum, and I appreciate that. So, hopefully, uh, this will benefit you, uh, a bit. Uh, I believe, Bethany, Jenny, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I think it was Jim Clifton who said, uh, "Hey for the," or, or maybe the guy who introduced him, can't remember, uh, but, but said, you know, "For, for the learners in the room," right, the people who really like to, like, dig in and, and, and digest the book, everything's here, right? There's an appendancy of like a hundred pages of, uh, Gallup's meta-analysis. And then for, for maximizers like me, uh, there's this front flap that you can read that's a very great summary of what's in the book, uh, because, you know, then you have to prioritize whatever you're going to focus on being excellent next. So, thanks for the support. Hopefully, it's a good resource. Um, and our managers, this week on Thursday, uh, we do quarterly manager meetings where we do some development, do some networking, share information. Uh, we'll have a copy of this book and be talking a bit more with them about, uh, about tactics around recognition, which is also in here. So, um, looking forward to that. Thanks for the support.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the-
I might have been longer than you today, Councilmember Keeley, I don't know.
No, you weren't.
No?
Not even.
No, no.
These two, these two over here always have a clock going, and they let me know.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
But you got close.
All right. We, uh, there are no other items to come before, I said, we stand adjourned.